May I have a motion to go in, I guess we're in open session, meeting with, joint meeting with the Board of Education.
Make that motion, Madam Chairman.
And the county commissioners, I have a motion. Second. You have a motion and second? All those in favor?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that the Board of County Commissioners enter into a joint session with the Madison County School Board.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Jensen, go here, second. Second by Commissioner Rice, all those in favor, raise your right hand. We are in open session with the school board.
Let us just say that we thank you for allowing us to come tonight and to make the presentation. Dr. Hoffman has done quite a bit of work. We know that there is a time limit, and that's one of the reasons we are here tonight because of, because of that timeframe. Dr. Hoffman?
I can, Forrest, I can start out, or do you want to go first?
Yeah, Dr. Hoffman, if I can just give a little background on the actual sales tax procedure mechanism. I've put three sheets of paper at everyone's place and added a percent sales tax, just so you understand kind of what the Board of Commissioners is considering tonight. Statute allows counties to levy additional quarter cent sales tax on purchases made within the county that are subject to the sales tax. And that limits Madison County's revenue somewhat, as we have always talked about, our sales tax basis limited. It is projected that if Madison County taxed an additional quarter cent, it would bring in $266,000. Gentry County by comparison would bring in $310,000. So even though they're smaller than us, they, they still have a little more going on in the county because they're not 10 minutes from Wiggerville, and that's just a factor of what we have. Just for fun, Buncombe County's quarter cent is $12 million. So that's half of our entire budget.
And part of that's ours, because we not yet.
That's right.
We've gone down that road.
We got that T-shirt.
But in order to implement that additional sales tax, a referendum must be held, and that, timing that referendum can take place at the same time as any other state or county general election, or at the same time as a primary election, even number of year, that pretty much means May or November of your, even number of years or principal times to hold that referendum. If that's something that's desired, the Board of Commissioners has to pass a resolution directing the board of elections to place the referendum on the ballot. Your resolution will state what election you want that to be held in. That referendum is non-binding, so the Board of Commissioners would have to vote to levy a quarter cent tax. If it passed, through the referendum, the county commissioners would still have to hold a public hearing, advertise that, and then vote to actually implement the tax. You can't implement it if, if a referendum isn't held, or if it fails in a referendum, but you can choose, or a future board can choose, not implement it even if it does pass the referendum. So that revenue can be used for any purpose, under statute basically, does not have to be education-based, though that is the proposal, it's a common proposal in many counties. They, they can support existing general fund dollars, and there's no prohibition on supplanting additional, existing dollars that are already being spent. There's nothing that binds the Board of Commissioners to spend the revenue from that tax on any specific purpose. However, a county Board of Commissioners can pass a resolution stating what you intend to use that for. You see that example in your, the first hand I have is a template resolution to simply put the matter on the ballot. And the final resolution with the nice Rutherford County letterhead is their sample resolution that their board adopted on their recent sales tax that stated where they planned to use the money. So that is something that regardless of what the Board of Commissioners wants to do, you probably would not be ready to do that tonight, but that's an example of how that is done, and sort of the different steps that Rutherford County went through on that. If the sales tax referendum is defeated, there's no time limit, the matters will be put back on the ballot, as long as it's placed on one of those November or May dates. And again, that estimated revenue is $266,000. Property tax and sales tax are the only significant revenue generating opportunities for the county. A lot of other smaller ones that are, that add up to a lot, but you don't have as much control over what the rates are. And this quarter cent is the only thing you control on the sales tax. For comparison, one cent on the property tax would bring in about $200,000. That's some background on what the options are for you, and what the authority is, and sort of how this works. And I know you can answer the questions about that now as we go. I know Dr. Hoffman has a lot more detail on his proposal and the Board of Education's proposal for what they would do.
Forrest, may I ask, may I ask a question? In the, in your fourth bullet, it's the referendum is non-binding, and you talked about the commissioners possibly passing a, a resolution if it were, if it were to pass. Could another board overturn that? I mean, does that make, am I asking?
You mean another board at a, at a future date?
At a different, yes, at a future date. Let's say...
I'm sure they could.
Yeah, they could repeal it.
Repeal it, yeah.
They could repeal it, and my understanding is what the, if this passes, if this goes on the ballot, if it were to pass in November, the commissioners would look at it probably in December. They would be voting to implement the tax, and they would budget that revenue at some point in the budget process, whether it's immediate, or whether it's a year down the road, or however they do it. A future board can either repeal the tax or use it for other purposes. That's just what's in the statute that they're allowed to do.
Thank you.
Thank you. I wanted to present, we're gonna, we're gonna do three, two issues for the boards tonight. The first one, the football stadium renovation. You know, they could be funded through the additional revenue provided by the Article 46, the quarter cent sales tax. And we wanted to do the best we could to get you some firm numbers and rationale in front of you to, to see why these are critical issues to us. The first one will be the football stadium, the athletic facility really, and then the teacher supplements. So I have a, have a presentation here on, on the athletic facility. And I say the Madison County Schools athletic stadium, because I wanted, first of all, to preface everything by reminding everyone that that is now developed into a countywide facility. It always was the hub of activity for a lot of things through the years as I came through, but it's even more now with rec league, middle school, football and soccer, of course, high school football, soccer banned, cheerleading. So it really is a multi-use facility. And so out of that, you know, that, that gets a lot of wear and tear over the years. I wanted also to give you a timeline of what I'm going to be presenting, and there's some key documents in here based on that. But you'll, you'll see a March 8th letter from what used to be Pageant Freeman, PFA Architects, with a projected budget on renovating the current football stadium. And then a June 26th letter from the Kessel Group, an engineering firm, which shows really the, the state of the, of the stadium, which then called for, out of that letter, a structural engineer to come in and do a deeper look at the stadium to make sure that, that that, that it was up to speed and was suitable for this year's activities. So we called on July 5th for that, and just wanted you to know that we began to have a conversation July 9th with President Marcell University, just regarding if this were to be in a situation that were drastic, could we potentially use the university stadium on Friday night, just to really begin that conversation. Met with Mr. Gillon on July 11th, and we reviewed this and many other issues. And then did a stadium walkthrough on the 12th with Woody Klosel, who was recommended by the architect from PFA, and he is a structural engineer. And by the 17th, we had a letter back saying that the stadium is in a satisfactory condition structurally. So there are a lot of issues, of course, with the stadium itself, and you'll see here in a, in a few minutes, its current state, but that the, the precast underpinnings of the stadium, he felt were satisfactory at this point, for at least one year, maybe two more years, moving on now. July 23rd, we had a regular Board of Education meeting to discuss this in open session, and put these items out there, and then the special call meeting on the 30th to pass the resolution. So just wanted to be sure that the county commissioner was aware of our timeline of what we've walked through here. So moving on to the March 8th letter that was sent to Dr. Cosby, it just basically says in the first, first paragraph that due to the age of the facility, the stadium is overdue for major repairs or complete replacement. The stadium is now 46 years old and has not been changed since 1972, from what we can tell, and then there are photos attached. I wanted to also point out in the first sentence of the second paragraph, the stadium needs major improvements to keep it safe, meet all current building codes, and meet all current accessibility codes. In addition, improvement should be considered to ensure that it's longevity and provide connectivity to the high school and overall increased functionality of the stadium. So that was really the letter from the architect, March 8th, and then the next page will have the budget, a projected budget to renovate the stadium. And so PFA Architects had also done the stadium at Marcell University, they'd done the press box there. So the first piece of that budget is a total of $687,500 for a new press box, and that would include then the base building, plumbing, there are currently no bathrooms in our current press box, there's no water to our current press box, new HVAC and electrical. So that, that upgrade that's necessary to the press box. And the numbers were taken from the MHU project and adjusted for inflation, that's how they looked at that. So it's really not the final product, but it gives us a good ballpark of what a press box would cost, or something we need to replace. Then moving down into the second segment of the budget, the new grandstand for 1,600 seats, 1,600, $630,000, and then reworking the upper level concourse, $50,000, replacing the storm drain system, upper concourse, and 500 linear feet of new water and sewer to serve the press box, that's 90, let's see, 90,000. The visitor side concourse, 70,000. The aluminum visitor bleachers, 500 seats, 50,000. And then resurfacing the track, which is needed currently, there, there are holes in the track, it's sort of, we tried to refurbish it, but it's time to replace that, 450,000. And then one of the things, I was talking to the architect today to make sure that these numbers were still current, they were developed in March, and there is a large contingency within this budget. You see the first line, miscellaneous improvements of 300,000. So they want to be prepared, if they get into something, that they have a, a contingency here. And then design and construction contingency of 15% at 304,000. And then down below that, the testing and civil, structural engineering and design fees, 315,795, for a total of $2,947,420 for the renovations to get the stadium up to, to speed. The next, the next page is the same budget, but I asked the architect today to make it as of today. What we're seeing in the market, construction is about a half a percent increase monthly. It's been six months since this thing was, was developed for us in March. So the numbers really are the same, with the exception of the construction cost escalation since March, which is down in the last section. Six months is 80,000, 80,298.75. So we've seen an increase in the cost just over time, and I know that's a concern. The longer we wait, the more it's going to increase. I wanted to be sure that he had some numbers in front of both boards to show what this is going to cost us as time goes on. But again, if we figure a half percent per month, that's going to get us a ballpark on construction cost. So with the current situation as of today, the 6th of August, to renovate the stadium, So the next part of the presentation is just the pictures from Marshall University's press box, and this is really the latter part of. If you go onto the third page of this proposal, or this, yeah, third page, you can begin to see the stadium, you can see the lower retaining wall, which you'll hear about in the next letter that I'm going to talk about. You can see the state of the stairs going up, and the current press box. And the visitors' stands, as you move on through this first part, on the other side of the field are in a pretty drastic situation. And you can see the concourse there. Now, moving on to the letter that we received, the next letter from the Kessel Group dated June 26th, this, this letter is really what distressed a lot of us in the board. You know, I've received, this was laying on my desk my first day of work, so we came in and it was there. But, and so this was the issue, that was like, here, Will, here's an issue for you. But we had talked with Dr., we had a lot of transition meetings with Dr. Cosby. Of course, everyone was aware, to an extent, of the situation, but really looking at the engineer's letter here. And I point to the first sentence in the second paragraph, the first and second sentence, "The stadium is approximately 45 years old, and based on the provided documents, it's constructed of precast tread riser assemblies supported on grade beams spaced at 25 feet on center." And then we move on to the third sentence, "During our site visit, sagging of the precast assemblies and exposed tendons were observed in numerous locations." And so, "Precast assembly concrete appears to have undergone moderate to severe degradation, especially at the front faces of the horizontal sections." And you'll see some pictures here that point to that pretty clearly. And then the third paragraph below, "Structural analysis and design of precast structures is beyond our scope of services, so we ask for a structural engineer to come in. However, based on our experience with similar construction," and this is the important piece, "is our opinion that the structure is exhibiting significant signs of distress slash deterioration. We recommend that a licensed structural engineer with experience in precast construction and design be consulted to perform a review and analysis of the existing structure to determine the suitability of the structure for continued usage by the public." And so we wanted to be sure that we had someone come in and say it's satisfactory, but this, this caused a great deal of concern on the part of the board. So really in July, we began in earnest, looking at it closely, taking steps, what do we need to do? And, and, and we'll get to the other write-up here in just a moment. But you can see through the next set of pictures, it really has some good language to go with it, so you can see what you're looking at. So picture one, the sagging visible in precast assemblies and metal bleachers, exposed tendon on east side of the stadium, and so forth and so on. You see photo three, exposed tendons and concrete degradation, and these are in different parts of the stadium. And then on to photo five, there's, we, there's an area repaired with metal brackets. So I want to be sure that the commissioners are aware that, you know, we, you know, we went in immediately after this analysis with our maintenance crew to address tripping hazards, address areas in the stadium that we can fix, getting ready for the, for the coming season. So we're, you know, I feel like we're making good progress in that direction now, getting ready for the opening game. Photo six is, is really an important one, too. East half of retaining wall at base of stadium outward rotation was observed. Because the stadium is built the way it is, on the slope and the drainage up at the top, which this project will address, while the precast structure underneath is, is there and said, the earth underneath is pushing toward that retaining wall and rotating outward. They refer to it as a failure. It's not a catastrophe yet, but it's a, it's a failure. And if you're standing on that lower step looking left, facing the press box looking left, you can, you can see where it's coming out, and then you can see seams in the stadium that are, that are starting to separate quite a bit. And you get freeze thaw, you get all kinds of factors there, you know, creating the issues. And then the east half of the retaining wall at the base of the stadium, and you can see the separation, the air point of the separation there in the last photo. And then the, the final letter here came in July 17th from Woody Klosel, but again, this is the structural engineer who was referred to us by the other engineers. And, and I just point to, he, he talks about, we talked about a lot during the walkthrough, that he felt like the, the stadium was satisfactory for usage this year, taking it year by year. In other words, the stadium's not going to cave in, the stadium is, structurally, is sound, is sound underneath. That what's happening is the concrete on top is distressed, that's creating a hazardous environment for anyone that attends the games. The fact that it's, was built in the 70s, you know, the, the same codes that apply now obviously didn't apply to that stadium their grandfather did, and there are significant safety issues there within that stadium. But, you know, the point here of it being in satisfactory condition, so the second sentence, second paragraph, as we discussed, the low care capacity to precast concrete elements is satisfactory at this point. So, you know, our stadium is, it's served a, a great life, you know, it's been, it's been there for the community over the years. I think that myself, other superintendents have come for it, and certainly maintenance departments have tried to fix it and done the best they can, and we've gotten a lot of good usage out of it. But as far as this community facility goes, it is distressed, and we've reached a point where, you know, it's time to look at some significant renovations. I hope these numbers are, they're, they're not final numbers, obviously, we've tried to do our research, get a budget in front of you, and make sure that the numbers are updated for you currently today, taking into account any kind of increase in inflation. So, and that's football stadium.
With this, with your findings, Will, Dr. Hoffman and the board, when you looked at this in the beginning, when we look back on this date, when you first started looking at this, right? You had numerous discussions on this, I assume, and talked about it and looked at it, and weighed the options as far as that, and that is why we are here today? Basically, because of what your findings were and what you see as a need?
That's right.
That is, that's right. And I think every one of us have been to this stadium numerous times in our life, and we saw a lot of changes there. I know I have, I've attended a lot of football games there, and I've saw a lot of changes throughout the years. And it's a shame, but time takes care of things. In a lot of ways, you know, this is, this is a time issue here. I don't think it's, I don't think it's neglect. Do you, do you make feelings that it's neglect? I don't.
Oh, let me, let me address that. No, having, having been up there a lot, the question, it was, it is not neglect. It's the fact that it was built in 1972, and it, much like myself, it's, we look a lot of light, you know, it's, it's showing light. And, you know, the, the fact is, in, in the, about 2,000, Dr. Wilcox was here, and we did go in and they raised a section of the stadium, and at that time, I was stunned, shouldn't have been, I was stunned to see that underneath, underneath that, I, I expected to see dirt and rocks, and you could put a small cart down, down in underneath that, that stadium. And, and like I said, I, I shouldn't really be surprised because of the, from 90 to 2000, while I was there, there was never, never, never a game or an event that we didn't have to have someone to go to the bottom. And there's a, there's a picture of that, where the mud has, has run out onto the, what then was the track, you know, that was the track. That particular track is not there. But there's never been that we didn't have to go and remove shovel, I mean, wheelbarrow loads of dirt. So, but since we've been on the board, there has been a lot of repair. We're trying to, and we have tried, the board has been very cognizant of the fact that that stadium is wearing, I mean, it's, it, it's showing its age. And we had, you see the, the patches, you know, in those, in those pictures. So it's certainly, in my opinion, not glad by, by anyone.
I think the significant amount of rain that we've gotten in the last two to three years, I know there's been at least two, maybe three major rains, has really sent it further into disrepair with all of the drain, even the drain lines that we put at the top of the stadium, along that wall, the rock wall. I just think it, it wasn't ever really maybe graded properly to accommodate all of the rain and then the changes that we've had, and as Dr. Banks said, it's just, it's showing its age. And it gets, every athletic event that happens in this county transpires out of that stadium. So a lot of wear and tear also. So, I mean, that's, I think had we known that the magnitude of what's happened in the last three years to that stadium, we would have definitely took a more laser focus on what was happening. But it, it wasn't, we weren't aware of the major significance as to what's been said in these letters. Had we known that, I'm sure we would have done something different.
I think what other, the, the June 26th letter forces you to have a different view when you're walking through the stadium. When you're standing, I was sitting on the 50-yard line last week and looked back up at the stadium from a distance, and, you know, the press box still looks beautiful, and the stadium is now getting ready for the first game. Unless you're looking and walking through it with a discerning eye, which we're all doing now, based on this, it's, you can really see those seams, you can see that wall, you know, rotating outward, and it's, it's, you know, it's, it's a different way to look at it. And I think that over the years, the board and the superintendents have done what they can to keep it shored up and to keep it in as good a condition as it can be. But really, we were, we were very alarmed with the June 26th letter, and, and we were relieved with the engineer, the structural engineer came and said that we could at least be there for another few years, but that, that's when really the, the action moment was for us to, to begin to look at what are our options, what can we do?
From my understanding, the one the school was built, Dr. Banks, now the first-class test for the other, in 1975, but when they were actually grading it, that was supposed to be graded down to highway level. And that would probably have filled the whole end back there for the stadiums they had, and it would have been a whole different volume. We're talking about 45, that would be too many years later.
Too many years, but you know that.
I mean, things were...
They knew, that's right.
Thank you. Oh.
Things, not people.
I know, I know, I'm always with, really, down and out. But for, for years now, as, as you talked about, and I think Lori had mentioned that, the, the steps coming down, oh my gosh, you know, they were hard to walk, climb anyway, because they, they just were level, I don't know what happened, but...
Oh, and high, I mean...
Yes, yes, but they've been roped off for many years.
Yes, I'm sure.
And that was built by students and vocational and...
And all of that will be reworked, that whole upper level and the drains, please.
Explain to us as a board, this quarter cent tax, what, what your plan is with it as far as what you've given us here, and how you're going to use this money. I mean, it seems like it's an awful small amount for such a big project.
Right.
So explain to me... So, explain to me how we're going to do it.
Okay. I'd call on Mr. Law and at this point, we're, we're going to go, and then we'll go to supplements after that. But we have, we have an analysis of the forty forty-two and the QSCB, the energy savings, all of that mapped out. And how with, and just really, we're, we're trying to present something to the commissioners and to our board that shows, you know, if we were to finance the stadium at its current budget here, at five percent over fifteen years, how that would impact forty forty-two, just for example. What would we be able to do? And if we put other funds on the table, for example, like lottery funds to help to service that, I mean, if Law is going to walk through that, I think it'll answer any questions.
On the sheet we gave out, on the top sheet, you'll see certain, this would be our, if we were, didn't have our quarter cent sales tax. And this upcoming school year, we, we, you can see we pay, in the two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen, we pay our, our QSCB payment of four twenty-nine. Our contingency capital out, like you gave us, the five seventy-eight, our energy savings payment of three sixty-nine. And then that would give us, that, that's a total expense of one point, about one point three seven six million. And our projected revenue coming in for forty forty-two would be nine hundred thousand. So, that would give us about one point six three six. And then the number on your far right, seven seven one forty-two, would be after we've held the two payments out that we want to keep in there to pay for the QSCB. And you see, if you go to the next line of two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty, we'd still have the QSCB payment, but we also would have just a hundred thousand in contingency. But then we also use our lottery money to pay the energy savings payment to save three hundred and eighty-two thousand. And then you see we've added in an athletic complex loan for three hundred and eight thousand, which those total expenses that year would be eight thirty-eight, oh seventy-seven, with income of nine hundred thousand, which would bring our balance to one point six nine eight thousand. And by using that lottery debt, it helps to save a little bit of forty forty-two. The next year in two thousand twenty-one, we'd do the same exact thing, use our lottery and pay the three ninety-five, three hundred and ninety-five thousand, which would add about another sixty thousand to the, to the balance of one point seven six oh. Then after that's where we would start, we'd have to go back to forty forty-two. And once we started paying those again, you would see, once we get down to twenty-three, twenty-four, we would get down in a red, in a red negative. And then on the next page, you'll see for quite five, six, seven years, we'll be that way until we can get rid of, we pay the rest of the energy savings and, and have some money to start building back up. On the second sheet, the second spreadsheet, you'll see what we've added in, doing exactly the same thing, but this time we've just added in the quarter cent sales tax of approximately two hundred and seven thousand dollars. And as you can see, we've, and that would still be using the lottery to help for a couple of years, just to shore up for forty forty-two. And as you see growing down, that, that would keep us in the black through the rest of, through the rest of the energy savings loan back page. Until we get through year twenty-three, twenty-four, we get down to, we'd still have one point one million in there. And then, then after that, we start kind of building back up because we paid off the energy savings. So, that's where the quarter, that's the difference. And if we had the quarter cent, where if we were having to do it without the quarter cent sales tax.
So, we, we buy ourselves some time with, you know, using, this is, these are all, you know, considerations that we've gone through. But if we used some of our lottery funds to offset the energy loan in these first couple of years, and then if we were able to, to give the, the quarter cent, you can see that we won't go into the red. What was hurting us is the energy loan with, with everything that we're trying to do through forty forty-two over the next five years.
And we all see the irony in that.
We see the irony there.
I mean, this was something that was entered into boards before us, boards before you guys. Not casting any aspersions here, but, you know.
It's an inherited.
This was a white, what was the, the word, white herring?
Yeah, red herring.
Red herring, yeah.
No, I think Michigan Rice was the one that found it.
That's right.
That was, that's the big thing.
But, but I think that you can see the variable of the forty forty-two, excuse me, the quarter cent, and our forty-sixth fund even here is, is a difference maker, you know, moving forward. Using the funds that we would have to, to put it all into pot, you know, we, it gives us an opportunity to do some things, move forward with this project. So, I think to answer your question. Yeah.
The term of the proposed three hundred and eight thousand dollar loan.
Yeah.
What sort of length of time do you think to repay that?
We, we went fifteen years, Norris, on that. And we went, we went at five percent, even though the market right now is about four point two, just to give ourselves a conservative estimate. We talked to Forrest about that as well, just to kind of be sure everybody's comfortable with saying, okay, we're looking at a financial structure. We're being as conservative as we can be with the interest rate we might get accepted.
And what was the loan amount?
The loan amount, was it three point two five? We, we looked at that as the, three point two five.
For three hundred and eight thousand dollars.
And that includes the supplement?
With, with the forty, with the forty forty-two, with, with the inclusion of the quarter cent, we also, Michael, you could speak to the supplement as well there, but that's also included in those numbers.
Right. On the, on the, on the second page, you can see that we added on the left, right side, on the second. So, on the right side, there was a one hundred and eighty-five thousand, three twenty, that's what would be needed to, to get to where we would like to with a thousand dollars for certified, five hundred for classified. And then we, and you can see we have, for example, in twenty-one, twenty-two, there was one point three million. And then we still have, if you took a hundred and eighty-five, we still leave a hundred and one, one point one in there.
And so, you're actually not proposing to start the supplement until school year twenty twenty-one in this proposal?
Well, we, we wanted to be sure that we could, you know, that's when we decided, we started it, yes. But I think we could incrementally, we've said a number of a thousand dollars for certified and five hundred dollars for classified. I think that for the faculty and staff, if we can demonstrate that we're moving in that direction, I don't think that we necessarily have to, we want to be at a thousand and five hundred by twenty twenty-one, but we'd like to start next year.
So, phasing it in.
Phasing it in to increase.
So, that's the teaspoon of sugar that helps the medicine go down, essentially.
That's right, yeah. But they would be fully engaged. And a hundred and eighty-five is in, put, put together with a hundred and seventeen that are already on the table for the supplements that, that we appreciate. So, that would be adding to that number to get to three, three hundred and two thousand.
So, on this board, I play devil's advocate a lot. So, what happens when, let's say the referendum goes on the ballot and gets voted down? What are you going to do?
I think that the, the unified, you know, message is, and I think we are transparent with these numbers with our community and showed that we need this. A lot of times that it doesn't pass in the first round. And so, we look at the general election in two thousand twenty and the primary and put it back out there again with a strong rationale for doing it. In the meantime, if our stadium is condemned, you know, we could look at a lot of different things. I mean, we're putting lottery on the table to buy ourselves a few years. I think we can, we could look at that as an initial strategy. We could also look at restructuring the energy efficiency loan along with the stadium to see if we can structure those resources and get a better payment. Put all that on the table, have more joint meetings moving forward. But, you know, first of all, I appreciate this, this meeting, our board certainly does, and the, you know, the spirit of unity here. And I think that if it doesn't work, we still do the media campaign, show that, that, you know, that we're trustworthy, good stewards of the resources, and this is a real problem. And we go for two thousand twenty and, and try to pass it then. And in the meantime, look creatively at our current financial situation, which is the first time I've ever seen forty forty-two like this. I appreciate Forrest putting it out there that we've, we've really adapted it to our current needs. So, we're kind of working together already. But I do think that restructuring the energy efficiency loan is a possibility with a new project, if that were the last resort.
How, how is the media campaign funded?
That's where our attorney comes in. I'd like for him to speak to that because there's certain things that we can do and certain things we can't do.
Right. That's what I'm concerned about.
Sure. What the board can do is spend public dollars, resources on educating the public as to the needs. So, the board can do a very detailed need study, put it out there, here are the needs, here are the costs, here are the expected expenditures. That's where the board has to stop. Any subsequent step to say, yes, has to come from a private committee that's formed with private dollars to actually say, yes. But this board is not prevented from educating the public as to how the money would be spent on the needs. And they do that all the way.
And our faculty and staff and.
And the board itself can do it. The board can pass a reservation, encourage the members to vote yes. Board members obviously have their first amendment rights and can participate in the votes if they can. So, the board and the superintendent do have some relay that the ranking files staff, but, but pretty much it's education versus that, just, just the work. Pretty clearly.
Just wanted to state it publicly.
Well, then let me follow up a little bit on that. The last few days, as I've been out around the county, I didn't keep a scientific study about it, but a lot of people, it's out there. Okay? So, people come up to you and they ask you questions about it. And fundamentally, it divided this way. And I think he was scientific study. But I, I talked to over fifty people, I sort of kind of, I keep them in a black notebook. The supplement side, and Matt said it well, the supplement side, when you talk about that, I only had a handful of people that necessarily thought that was a bad idea. They realize all of our employees here are poorly paid, county employees, school. We have a constant competition, we know that with Asheville, Buncombe County. That's, that's not. So, that part seemed to be pretty well, say, okay. And I had a couple of people that even described that as a box. You know, it's a certain amount of money for a certain purpose, that this is a box for that. This is the bigger cell. Okay? Now, I'm impressed with this presentation, I'll be honest about that. I'm impressed with the presentation. But what the public looks at spending money, and I actually had a couple of, I used the expression, well, we're not going to give anybody a blank check. And convincing the public that, number one, it is needed. And number two, that this is the way it needs to be paid for. Now, I'm not saying that can't be done, don't get me wrong. But particularly in the short timeframe that we're dealing with here before the decision is going to be made. Right? It is absolutely critical that the public believes not only it's necessary, but believes the validity of this. And we also are in an environment, and let's just be honest about this, where the public doesn't necessarily trust government. We have some collateral damage from Nextdoor, okay, without running over that. And from, from Washington to the Out House. And when you're asking people to approve their own tax increase, for which I think is the right way to do that, okay, the convincing of this application of the money will be the tough sell. And the teacher supplement side, I actually had about ten people who said they would unconditionally support, that came up and said, you know, we will unconditionally support. More often than not, I got the deer in the headlights look, the I'm not convinced, or a few outright, I'm not going to spend tax money on anything like that. So, back to education, back to informing people properly, will be absolutely critical for the public to be convinced to tax themselves for the purpose. And again, the teacher supplement is far more mutually agreed on need, okay? And it's not a reach too far. You're not talking about taking two thousand dollars or twenty-five hundred dollars or those sorts of things. It's a fairly modest teacher supplement. But there is also a reality about other county employees, and this is also just the environment. We do have a lot of very poorly paid county employees that we struggle just to keep the health insurance on and trying to provide raises. So, even those other county employees which vote here, they're part of the system, they're part of the family, to have them come on board to vote, you know, for this as well. And they, they realize the money's a different stream of money. That, that, that's not the point here. This is a brand-new stream of revenue, okay, that's going for that. It's not like we're robbing people to pay Paul, okay? We're, we're not. You're not proposing to do that. You're not proposing to get more local money from the existing revenues. But in the mind of, of the people that need to be convinced, and I'm just feeding back what I've heard the last few days, almost totally unsolicited, so that you guys know where we're at and where, you know, that, that's just, that's just the reality, guys, of.
Well, the reality, the reality I've encountered over this is it's a time issue right now because of the time we have to get it on the ballot. And it's not a political issue, which is being thrown out there that it's a political issue. Well, I'm for education. Let the people vote. That's how I look at it. Let the citizens vote on this. Don't make it a political issue like some people are trying to do.
And I've got to, I've got to address that.
I guess not in my jump script.
Let me, let me begin by saying that, as I said the other night, it's been an honor to work with this board of education because I have never seen them vote on anything based on politics. Now, I can't always say that I've worked in this system. I've been kicked under the table because I have, I have recommended someone for a position, which apparently should not have been, I should not have admitted. This has nothing to do with politics, absolutely nothing. And, and I've also been contacted to say, hey, what you need to do is you need to put it in the lap of the, of the commissioners. That's what you need to do. You need to go to the commissioners and say to the commissioners, it's your responsibility for, for facilities, you pay for it. And my response is, they ain't got the money. I mean, you know, if you were Buncombe County and had that money and were, you know, you were in Madison, then that would be something completely different. But to come to you, to ask you for something that could be potentially very dangerous to our, to our community and to community members, if something were to happen, you know, I, I don't, I don't foresee myself as someone who looks at the glass half empty. I look at my, I look, I think of myself as someone who looks down the road at what could happen. And immediately, you know, of course, I'm only going to be on board a couple more months, but immediately, I, I, I can't stop caring, I can't stop worrying about things that happen. That's why I'm here. But for someone to even admit that it's political, goes against every grain, every fiber in my body, and it's ludicrous. This board, this board, Dr. Hoffman, you, you, you know, he was really excited for that to be on his desk the first day. They have met this challenge and, you know, these folks have tried to work a, work plan that, that we can possibly see an end to having a facility that's, that's safe. And, and I also would say to you that, for those of you who've been around children, you have no idea how many students athletic saves, literally saves. A student who'd come in my office saying, I'm quitting. I'd get coached. They'd get them involved in sports. They'd have to keep the GPA up. Nothing else mentioned about quitting school and then graduating. So, this is, you know, to me, there's just so many variables. So, this is, you know, to me, there's just so many variables that, that play into this, you know, I was there, Mr. Rice, you were there when it was, when it was built, yes, it's getting old, that kind of bothers me a little too, I'll have to admit, when I, when I read these documents, and I see the pictures of how, of how bad it is, but, you know, you need to go up there and look. It, it is aging, it has a lot of wrinkles, and, I mean, injection of botox isn't, well, hey, you know, we're going to have to have some major, major work.
And I think that Norris is speaking to, you know, the public trust in, in any of these projects, and we just have to be very clear about our transparency with the budgets, with the resources, it's pub, public information anyway, and just share that, that we're in a predicament, that this is a, an avenue to address it, there are other potential avenues, but that we don't want to undermine the public trust by not sharing those things in the next few months leading up to the election, and if it doesn't pass, let's be sure to continue to share it, because this will continue to be an issue. But I, I think you made a good point, that that's really, there is a lack of trust there, and I think that this, these are both two trustworthy boards, and we need to, to structure any of these, these initiatives around being fully open, you know, I've got copies over here for the public that's here tonight on the presentation, we put it on our websites, we put it in the paper, we, we're accessible, you know, so.
Well, I've been on this board four years, I'm going off, everybody knows, that's fine, I lost the election. Don't assume, please don't assume that people understand what the hell is going on.
That's true. More is better.
The cost they don't, and I'm going to tell you, there's a few people who want to be king of the county, king of the county, that want to run the show, it doesn't matter who is being impacted, this board here, this five-person board, it's been a great board to work with. We come in this room before the session, we talk about things, we hire people, people told me when, when I was running, they said, I don't like the way the hiring process is done, the way we've implemented new policy. People said, you know, I just don't like these damn people, excuse my language, that don't pay their taxes, do something about it if you get in there. Pretty soon after we got elected, this board got elected, we did that, and I was rewarded by that, by being sent home. So please, don't assume that the people all over this county know what's going on, because a lot of them, I hate to say it, don't. I mean, it's, gossip is sexier than the truth. So, you know, I am a big, I am a big fan, my wife has taught schools for thirty-two years, she did her, started her thirty-third year, I'm a big fan, she, she's in Buncombe County, has been fortunate to, to have a very nice supplement, which we very much appreciate at our house. But we need to make sure that we keep pressure on Raleigh, because the teachers are paid too little to begin with. You know, we tell, we tell, we say we want to turn our, our best resources, our children, over to the, to you guys, and then, you know, we pay the teachers, we pay them, I mean, it's just, you know, and, and it's, it's not a political thing, the Democrats have been in charge and they didn't pay, Republicans have been in charge, they didn't pay, so I don't want to hear nothing about politics, it's not about politics, spend the money, pay the people, they're professionals, pay them what they deserve.
Our children deserve it.
Yes, I fully support what y'all are doing, I understand that the stadium is having some problems, got to fix it, bottom line, so, I do, I just wish y'all well, y'all start to have my support.
Let me ask a question. On July thirtieth, when you called your special meeting and your resolution was adopted, was it a unanimous vote?
Yes. Okay. Yes. We have one other, this segment on supplements, if y'all like here, just, Ms. Haagen, share with y'all some of those numbers.
Just have the numbers in front of me, I'm just going to pass them around, and you guys have seen that, but if you wanted, yeah, what we wanted to do is just make sure that you had some talking points on it. And the reason we put Buncombe County on there is we know we're not comparable as far as financially, though we are very comparable in our innovative test boards to Buncombe County, we're right up there, we are in front of them.
No, we are in front of...
Yes, so, we do more with less to begin with, we're very proud of that, but the biggest and most richest resource we have are our teachers because they do our core instruction. And what we do is we have them through rigorous professional development so that we can continue to have sustainability within our county. At K five, we have four master literacy trainers, one in every school, and they're here, and they stay here, and they're, I would put them up against anybody in the state of North Carolina when it comes to training other teachers how to teach literacy, period. Happens to be one of them, close to them right here, but they are excellent. At six eight, we have got two coaches out there right now that were trained, and you can't say Newt Lewis anymore, but it was one of the great things, I know financially and they went bust, but we had coaches trained, and that was ten thousand dollars a session, but that coach has stayed out there, and we're able to now fund her to be able to free up two periods a day to continue to have that training out there daily. We're one-to-one out there, and there, we are getting better and better out there.
And that training was the best I've ever, ever had.
Absolutely.
I've ever...
And nine twelve, we had, here's where it gets the tough part, and then I'll read this, because this is my biggest pet peeve, we had three people, excellent, excellent people, that are now in Buncombe County doing what we trained them to do at ten thousand dollars a week. We went ten thousand dollars and they went to Buncombe, ten thousand dollars, they went to Buncombe, ten thousand dollars, they went to Buncombe. So on our fourth try, we stayed, that's forty thousand dollars later. Now, as far as our academic, I mean, we can't be more proud of what we do, but just to show you with Buncombe, we, I wanted to do just an example of a five-year teacher, a ten-year teacher, and a twenty-year teacher, and those are people in my mind, and of course I'm not going to say them out loud to you, but I would die if we lost them, they're just that good a people. But my five-year person, or our five-year person, she could go to Buncombe and make twenty-five hundred dollars more just this school year. And that's mortgage payments, that's car payments, that's children going to college. And I'm not asking for this amount of money, we don't have it, but I just want you to know figures. Ten-year person could go and make thirty-six hundred dollars more this school year and drive fifteen more minutes. A twenty-year person who you have instilled every bit of professional development, and they know everybody in the county, you have those wonderful relationships, they could go and make almost six thousand dollars more this school year. All right, on the, the other side, we do three hundred and fifty, and I thank you for that, because you were allowed, allowed us to do that, I think it was just two, maybe a couple of years ago, that we started that, and I thank you for that, because our teachers sucked that up just like that was three thousand dollars, and they were that appreciative. And then now we're at two fifty for a non-certified, and they just, that's gold to them. But to implement, to do the thousand and the five hundred, like we want to progressively get to, that's the supplement that would cost us would be three hundred and two thousand dollars basically. Now, we already have a hundred and eight that we do for the two fifty and three fifty, but we're going to need that additional hundred and ninety-three that Dr. Hoffman talked about earlier. But all we wanted to do was just to let you have those figures in your mind and give a look at that, to go with everything else.
And Lisa, that's not talking about what it will do to the retirement.
Right. Absolutely, because when you retire the last three years, the last four, the last four, they take that average, your highest averages, and so you, it not only affects grade point, them working this school year, it affects their retirement and how much they can go out at. So your veterans, you know, if they go their last three years, and can go the last three or four years in Buncombe and max out, that, that helps them in their retirement.
What percentage of your teachers are national award certified?
Oh, I'll have to go back and look at that.
It's, it's pretty low, it's about ten percent.
I would say ten to fifteen percent.
National award certified, yeah.
Do you know, it wasn't that long ago that we gave the teachers a twenty-five dollar gift card to Eagles.
Yeah, that's what we did. But that bought a gas, that filled you up with gas.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, it wasn't, and they were appreciative of that, don't get me wrong, absolutely, but they certainly deserve, deserve it.
We just wanted to show you that way you're happy.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Another issue here, just as a final point, in, in the, in the salary scale, you can see DPI, you can pull it up, around fifteen years, the salary increments really flatline for teachers, and so right when they're in the heart of their career, you know, we've invested a lot in training, inquiry-based methodology, lots of different, you know, one-to-one training through the Friday Institute, and then we, we lose about six teachers a year to Buncombe, you know, that's about fifty percent of our attrition rate, so.
I mean...
We, we count on average, we count on average twelve a year, six of those go to Buncombe.
Twelve and half go to Buncombe.
Half go to Buncombe, yeah.
Yeah, that's a shame.
And so we're, you know, we're facing an issue being bordering Buncombe, but other counties, it's hard to compare us to Midway, Nancy Avery as well, so it's, you know, we're right there, and it's just easy to drive north to Buncombe, you know, and as Mr. Rice said, I mean, it's a great addition to the income, you know, so.
I know back when I was growing up, had my mother been able to get a three hundred fifty dollars a year, that would have made a big difference.
Because she spent that much on her own pocket, or more, or more.
On, on her classmates, right.
Oh, yes, oh, yes.
She sure did.
And they still do.
She would go to the school supply in Asheville, and I'd go with her, and she'd take all, she'd pick out stuff and, yes, and pay out of her pocket.
Which probably done half of it to keep her job.
Yeah.
Yes, that was a different day, too.
Yes, that was...
That was a different day.
But, you know, that's, that's why I say I'm, I'm big on the supplement, I'm big on giving teachers more money every chance we can, any way, you know, whether it be through this quarter since sales tax or whatever we need to do it.
I know it's been alluded to by this panel and by everybody else, the progress that's been made, and everybody in this room should be commended for that improved relationship, that improved progress regardless of what the commissioners used to do now and what the teachers used to do, but when you look at the supplement, it's small, but it's a start, you know, and that was something commissioners really wanted to do, we know you all wanted to, it's really something that at that time, we kind of saw a way to do it, and figured that part out. We're the ninety-third in the state, poor people funding, last ranking rep to A T F, but, you know, that's not high enough, but, you know, moving in that direction, probably in the seventies, and that's been at a time when money's been scarce, and that's been a big step by everybody here, and y'all are doing good work with it, Madison County Schools were very good for me, this county's been good for me long before I ever had a job with it, and it's just a good place to live, a good place to, to work together on all the different things we do. And finally, I will say one last thing about how we try to work together as a county, and that is our no-shelf course is doing the schools drive, and we also have our child support is organizing a county employee school supply drive, second year they're doing that, trying to get every department bins out there to try to help these teachers recognizing all that they're paying out of pocket and all that, so it's really an effort to, we've tried to make as county employees, as the commissioners have, to try and share in that as a community, as it's what we're all working on.
Very good, very good impression, very good.
What other ghost is lurking around the next corner, though, is my biggest concern? I mean, I know, to quote Dick Cheney, we don't know what we don't know, but we had five, six years ago, our biggest need was a theater, and we all know that didn't pan out. Two, two and a half, three years ago, our biggest need was early college and improvements to the existing school buildings, which this board got behind wholeheartedly, every one of us felt strongly about that, and we, and we made that happen.
And we're very appreciative of that.
And I understand that, and I don't mean to suggest otherwise, I don't, I don't mean to suggest otherwise. I, I guess my biggest concern is, obviously, is, you know, what else is out there that's going to blow up in our face, because this was totally, you know, you can't say that a forty-five-year-old structure getting run down is totally unexpected, but, you know, we've, we've been faced with the fact, well, well, this is, this right now is our biggest need, and then, if we get this, we don't really need anything else, and then something else comes up, there's always something lurking around the corner, is what I'm saying. What else is lurking around the corner?
Just like ownership, you just never know.
That's right.
You've got to constantly maintain.
That's right. And no one could ever say that this is the last thing we're going to need.
Sure.
Because, just like Lori Mead, you know, I, tomorrow, you know, the roof could fall in, or...
One of, one of the first things that I did was go meet the principals individually and review schools, I mean, I know the schools well, it's been thirty years since I've taken a deep look, and I want to applaud both boards for what you've done to get our schools up to a level, you know, you, you've really made the investments where the students are, I applaud both boards for that vision. To answer your question, and it really is a part of institutional, you know, just development, you know, the buildings, they just deteriorate, and you're constantly trying to, to upgrade, and I think this is a side post, though, of what's going on in our high school. I would say if I just answered your question flat out, honest, that the high school is the next frontier.
And that's my concern.
And I don't, I don't know what else is, you know, the building is, is doing well, and again, preventive maintenance, working hard, but there's just a reality to when that building was built, and it's going to be our high school, you know, we're, we're more than likely not going to build a new one, so I would think that, but right now, looking at the analysis of it, it's the stadium, and then there's a very, you know, a big possibility that, which even makes the, the quarter set even more important, when we look at the capital needs this will address, you know, moving forward as, as a revenue stream, because I do believe, in all honesty, that we are going to see some things uncovered in the next few years at the high school. Don't, don't, don't know what they are now, but that would just be logical to think that, yeah.
And the projection to do the renovations, and that's what ultimately what we're doing is renovating the football stadium, correct?
Yeah, we would be replacing the grandstand, the, the press box, yes, I mean, and really...
So some of those inherent problems are there...
Well, the, the, the project does address the drainage and rerouting the water, really the, you know, a lot of the deterioration comes from time, you know, when I was walking through with a structural engineer, he said, if your stadium were, you know, a person, you know, she'd be about eighty years old, you know, she's distressed, you know, you're seeing the sagging, even the terminology and the letters, but, but what, what accelerated that was the...
You're getting some bad ones.
Yeah, no. You're getting a takeaway, yeah.
I'll be leaping out of here.
I don't...
Well, a hundred years, a hundred years.
That's what the architect said, right, yeah, there wasn't wheels thing, but that's the architect.
And no one, no one the propensity...
That's my architect, that's right, wasn't it?
No one the propensity for rumors in, in the county that can, can run wild and take on a life of their own. Are we proposing building a press box like they have at Marshall University?
I think they wanted just to give us an estimate, no, we can come back with a design that we, they wanted to give us the, what, what they had that was relevant, they had done recently to say, this is a ballpark, you know, for, and, and that's a significant-sized press box, I don't know that you'd have to go that big, or even have that type of structure, that's, that aesthetic.
So we really, at this point, just to clarify, we don't have a hard set of plans for what we want to do to that football stadium?
No, I just wanted to be sure that the board at least had something from an architect that was in a, that was in a range, and, and something you could really at least look at and say, that's...
An idea.
Well, and it's fairly close, I mean...
Well, I understand you've really only had two months or so to work on this, so, I mean, I, I get that, I mean, I know you're just...
But, you know...
And with the press box, you know, if you touch anything, you have to bring everything up to code, up to code, plus all ADA accessible, so, you know, that really puts a little more expense to that, but it's been well overdue, the press box, well...
And it's way too small.
It is.
In, in your, you know, they're doing games.
But more than anything, the safety aspect.
But on the timeline and progression here, it seems like this, I mean, it seems like the stadium issues are more pressing than the press box issues. On the timeline, it shows doing a press box first, is that how the plan's going to roll out?
I mean, not necessarily, but there, you know, I don't think we're going to be able to separate them at all, because you've got the, the grandstand and the press box together. With ADA compliance, you don't have restrooms in the current press box, nor water. With ADA compliance, you don't have restrooms in the current press box, nor water. So, you just, in order to do that, you're going to have to tackle it all, I think, in pretty, in pretty close sequence.
Well, yeah, and rebuilding the stadium itself, we've all been in it. The drainage from the top, talking about something that was never built right in the first place, those that were around then. You drive down the street, and the street is tilted the wrong way, it's settled.
Let's have the roads of that county right now.
All the water.
And those were done by the DOT, so what are you going to do?
Well, this one was actually done by the DOT. I remember that road was built back there, and actually what was built by the DOT. And they maintained it all the way to the parking, plus parking lot. But, it will have to be fixed at some point in time. It will require revenue from somewhere. And, I don't normally speak on behalf of all of us, but it's like when we built the early college, or when we did the renovations. Folks, when we do something, let's do it right. Let's not halfhead it, okay? We're real good at that historically. We've talked among ourselves about how poor we take care of our buildings, and partly resources, it's partly lack of maintenance. But, whatever is done, I think we're all committed to, however we do it, to do it right. Now, some could say, in spite of its problems, it's lasted half a century. You know, it, it really has, and it's exposed to bad weather, all of those various things. I was running through my mind while I was sitting here, I can't think of hardly another public stadium in western North Carolina that's been there for fifty years, anywhere that's either not undergone a massive renovation, or a complete replacement. So, back to that reality, okay?
Well, but we have the last hundred-year-old jail, and we have the last hundred-year-old courthouse, too.
Yeah, and we're turning them into something else. But, but again, the, the bottom line, we know the parts of this are going to be an easier, acceptable for the public. Having people properly informed, and being as, word sometimes overused, but it's true, as open and transparent as everybody can be, gives it a much better chance of the public deciding what they want to do wisely. And Clayton is exactly right, because we all agree here, that public ignorance on a spectrum of things, fifteen percent voter turnout in the last election, which demonstrates we could go for the rest of the night about apathy, or about what, all sorts of words, which means that the public, in order to make this work, or wherever we have to pay for things in the future, they have to be convinced that's the right thing to do. And I firmly believe that the public has the right, and to vote on that. We discussed when we had the fire tax issue of Metaphore and Spring Creek. We were all sitting in here wishing very much that those folks on Metaphore and Spring Creek could actually vote, whether they voted for or against it, to have the opportunity to, to do that. And, that to me, is an overarching importance here, that we don't have the right to deny the public the opportunity to make that decision. In fact, I will, of course, say I think it's our duty. Now, for those who are not in favor of it, they certainly will not be in favor. But for those who could or should, then that becomes convincing those folks that that is the wise thing to do. But, as a member, and I'm speaking for myself, I will support the option for the public to have the opportunity.
Do y'all know at this point if there are options for reducing costs? We have time, we're probably going to brief you, but...
I think that it does depend on the time. The contingency was, was discussed today with the architect, that he has built in, you know, that, that we could, but he's also trying to plan for unforeseen things, so we have a, a number that we can at least work with this in a ballpark.
If you have the two contingencies together, that's the largest line item in the rest of...
Yeah, so we, you know, we, and he said that over and over again, he, because, you know, it's, it's Scott Donald, and we talked twice today on the phone, but he, you know, he does a lot of these, and he, but he wanted to make sure that there's some flexibility there for unforeseen that are bound to be there, so...
Well, and the soil was the unknown.
Yeah.
You know, we don't know what condition the soil is in underneath there. That structure has been saturated forever, so...
That whole side of the mountain is one gigantic field. Some of us in this room, the last solid rock there is the one the transformer sets on behind, okay? When that building was built, that was a cliff off behind there, it was an entire hole back there, okay? And the last piece of solid ground up there is where the electric transformer sets on. Everything behind that is filled.
So, thank you. Enough, what else, what other questions do you have for us?
I don't have any. I would just say, the ten of y'all, every citizen in the county has to say something, but ten of you have a little more, twelve of us have a little more responsibility than others to look at the money, and what's going, and that's, that's reality. And, this is a very good way to run through the numbers. But everybody needs to realize that you've got two good scenarios here that will happen, whether you've got the extra money or not, but when you look at that bold number going down through the years, and when you think about paper reserves, which we've already counted for the QSCV reserve, we all desire a reserve for this long as well. If you do that, you still have money. The lowest point that I gave, when you took out the two papers, would be five hundred and forty-six thousand dollars, so there's still money there. But all the needs that could come up, the things you don't know, and you can't ever be certain about that, but everybody has to kind of weigh that, and it's the same, same discussion anybody has every, anytime they decide to spend money, is where else could it be spent? What happens if we don't plan adequately for the future? And that's hard to tell, but everybody has to have a reasonable comfort level that in a few years, or several years, when something comes up, because something probably will. Not because anybody's done anything wrong, but because it's just how things go. Like, buildings age, and things come up, and we may see enrollment increase at some point. You know, it's been declining, but we may see it in a few years, it may turn around and really be booming. So, everybody just has to be comfortable with what those numbers are, and what you're able to do for the long term.
One thing to note is, when we started with the QSCV, we made sure that we had some extra capital out there. I mean, we all, both, both groups made sure of that, and I think that's reflected in this first sheet, that, you know, if we absolutely had to, we might could scrape out with just those renovations. It would have to be phased in, and, you know, it wouldn't work as well. But, you do notice the supplement's completely off the table, though. There's no, no sales tax, that's...
Yeah, but possible.
We would like to thank you
Yes, thank you.
For allowing us to come and make a presentation. We certainly appreciate everything you've done, and we all sincerely mean that. I know, I will reiterate one more time, I've been asked on two, three separate occasions to be sure to bring something up, why don't you get the Board of Education to bring up something to the commissioners they can't pay for, and then in essence, hit your head. You know, that's not the way, that's not the way we feel. You know, we know that you've given us everything that you can, we know that you're strapped, we, you know, and, and we just appreciate the support, honestly, we just appreciate everything you've done for us, and will continue to do.
Well, and again, congratulations to everyone involved. We have a very good school system here. It reflects a good community, folks, let's not forget that. We have a public school system that is very much the public school system. We have very few kids that are in private school, very few out of the county. And, credit to a lot of people who've worked a long time, very hard, a lot of support, but it also reflects a very good community that we live in. But we have an outstanding school system that manages to get a great deal done on what it has for resources.
And, and, Doris, I, I, I know everybody wants to be hers, and I will, I promise.
I heard that, I don't think anybody else did.
Uh, Teresa, I seriously doubt that will happen.
Well, anyway, you know, I'm old enough, and heck, and I've been in this system long enough to, to see and to have been involved where this wouldn't have happened twenty-five years ago. The transparency of, of this document would not be presented from the Board of Education. And, like, you know, I don't feel like I'd get kicked, I mean, I know I wouldn't get kicked under the table as a principal today. And you just don't, I mean, yes, you probably do know how good that makes me feel, because we have come so far, I mean, Madison County has come so far, and I'm just so proud of everybody. I mean, it, just, just like the test scores, that I just keep, I have kept raving about, not for three-simaines' purpose, not, not at all. We are who we are based on our past, and I have had Bunkham County thrown up to us in so many ways, at so many times, at so many ballgames, that it just infuriates me. I mean, that's one of my blacktop VIPs, you know? So, when we're ahead of Bunkham County, I tell everybody who I know in Bunkham County, I call to say, "Guess what?" You know? So, I'm rubbing it in like crazy, and it's because, not because of three-simaines', not because of anything I've done, it's because of us sitting here together, of all the things that's changed over thirty years, that we're able to sit here and look across the table and share information, and to trust one another. And, whether you admit it or not, there was a time in the county when that wasn't possible. And unfortunately, as we mentioned, our name, I've, I've been, I've, I've been, you know, there to, to see that. And, and, and who does that hurt? Hurts the kids. Doesn't hurt anybody else, hurts the kids. And I don't care if you're a Democrat, or you're a Republican, or you're an independent, I don't care. When it comes to kids, there are no politics, or is, I don't know for a fact. It doesn't have a place, and, and to, to think that we now run, I was so proud the day that the Board of Education turned a non-level. I'm like, wow.
Nineteen ninety-four.
Nineteen ninety-four, I couldn't believe that Madison County got actually called nonpartisan. We were now non, you know, we could run. Of course, you know, I wasn't, I was still working, but I was just so proud of that. And, and we have taken a step back with, with that, I, I will say.
I wish this board would become partisan.
You know, and, and, you know, I was thinking that today, exactly, it doesn't matter. We sit here tonight talking about kids, we're not talking about political affiliation, not much. I mean, where would our schools be if that's all we talked about? Well, they'd be where we were a long, long time ago, not where we are today.
And still be like we were in...
And if you'd like to pass the plate, or, amen to that, you know, I just, you know, that's my soapbox, and like I said...
I'd like to finish this story by telling you that Dr. Banks was cheerleader
Oh, Lord.
on our first football team we had in Madison County.
Thank you.
And that was the year before we actually went up there to solid sports.
Yes, thank you.
When you and I were graduating tenth grade and eleventh grade, you were cheerleader, so she, she's...
And you were, and you were...
I was nothing.
You were Mr. King, or something like that, whatever it was. He was.
Bobby Boucher, whatever.
He was, so, telling her, we'll...
He's a lot better than I was.
What was the title for that, Mr. Madison High?
Oh, yeah.
Yes, it was.
Elected the king and queen.
I was never like, there you go.
Now, we're talking about King of the Camp.
That was forty years ago.
Ladies and gentlemen, I don't want to adjourn the party.
Man, you got it there.
But, uh... Well, I would like to move that we approve the resolution calling for the advisory referendum pursuant to North Carolina General Statute one oh five dash five thirty-seven.
Chairman, I will second that motion.
We have a motion by Commissioner Rice for the resolution calling for the advisory referendum pursuant to North Carolina General Statute one oh five dash five thirty-seven, second by Commissioner Gentry. All those in favor, any more discussion by the board?
None.
All those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed?
And I want to explain my vote here. This is, I've always supported education, the early college, everything's come along, I support it. This is a spur of the moment thing, and when this goes on the ballot, they're going to see a four-cent sales tax. That's, that's what the people in this county is going to see, and they're going to say, "Look what the commissioners has put up here." And, you know, there's no guarantee of this, you know, it might be, if we're here, whoever's here, it'll be a different one here. At least some, some will be different. So, you never know how long this is going to last for schools. It might last one year, or two years, or depending on if the county needs the money or not. And we are, we don't, we don't have any money. And, and it is, it's just something that I can't see putting out there as a sales tax. It's just an increase in tax, that's, that's all you can make of it, and that's, uh...
But they vote, we don't.
That's right.
It's their vote.
But they're, they don't know, it'll be done, it'll, it'll show us, it's been, uh, we'll increase taxes.
The taxpayers vote for it.
Yeah, I know, but we put it out there, we're responsible.
The school board's putting it out there.
No, they're not.
We're okaying it to go on the ballot.
Yeah, but they don't have anything to do with it.
Yeah, they do have, they do have anything to do with it. They're going to explain to the public what the money's for.
And you're not going to help us, not that I'm going to get into this, but let me just say...
But I'm going to get claimed for it.
Well, and no one, and no one should be getting blamed.
Well, but who's going to get it, you know, who's it going to come back on?
It depends, hopefully, there's no blame from the place.
When you see on the ballot an increased four-cent sales tax, where's that coming back to?
Well, I think it says right here on the, uh, resolution, that it's for the Madison County Board of Education that requested the increase to the four...
Yeah, but I just went through that, that don't guarantee anything more than what the next board votes.
Well, I think that goes back to making sure that people are aware of what we're doing and educating the public, because as somebody said here, it's hard to make the point to the community if we don't get out there and feed our own ground, so I get where you're coming from.
I'm not, not rich education, I cover all those improvements, but they've got, but maybe we'll have an increase in forty, forty-two pounds. The economy's doing good.
That would be good, yeah.
Maybe we'll have no increase, but just to come and put a sales tax on citizens of this county, we, you know, we're, we're not a rich county.
But they're going to decide if that's going to happen.
Well, I know we are, but we're going to get blamed for throwing out something there on the spur of the moment.
May I, I, I'm sorry.
Yeah, you're talking, yeah, that's fine.
I, I, I didn't mean to interrupt you. One of the things before, before I leave, is I would, I'd love to invite the commissioners to come and tour the, the schools, lots of great things happening, and if, if Dr. Hoffman, is that okay?
Get together, Forrest, and try to work out something that we schedule.
Sure. Week fifteen, our first thing.
There, there are a lot of things that are...
Well, we'd like to, whenever you all work out.
Can we tour the one in New York?
Do the one in New York.
Oh, well, hey, talk about that one.
But be a way for, for, for both boards, really, to do something where you're not talking about just a budgetary item, and some, but you can go in and see, we can pick a couple of the schools, visit some classrooms. If you haven't lived, you've been around a kindergarten kid, or a first-grade kid in a while, you know, and going through the high school, looking at the stadium, maybe have lunch, or do something in form, but make that an annual, you know, thing, where the two boards come together and just walk through it for a couple hours. Okay?
And if we need to do two dates, or whatever, you know, we can...
Dr. Hoffman, just give me, uh...
Yeah.
Get me Forrest.
Yeah.
We can have you all over the landfill later.
You take your ass, so you're all ready. Mr. Chair.
Well, I've spent a lot of time on this other landfill.
I've been there every weekend.
I believe if we are to adjourn with a further discussion, that you would need to adjourn first and then we would need to adjourn. I believe is proper.
That is correct.
Again, from the Board of Education, we certainly do appreciate everybody. And do I have a motion to adjourn?
Take the motion.
Here, look at, I'm sorry. Do I have second?
Second.
Any discussion? I'll vote. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adjourn the Board of County Commissioners.
I have a motion by Commissioner Gentry, second by Commissioner Rice to adjourn. All those in favor, stand up.